Alright, we're all good.
So, welcome everybody. I think we're gonna get started. So, welcome to our MGS Town Hall meeting. Again, the purpose of this meeting is to basically talk through the acquisition of the Malberg Generating Station which occurred back in December of 2021. And we wanted to go over the overview. The economics of the purchase and then how we will all benefit from this. So here's the agenda and then I'll go ahead and kick it off. So, the MGS, the Malberg Generating Station was purchased back in December of 2021. The, the power plant is 120 megawatt base load, 134 megawatt unit. It's a combined cycle natural gas fired power plant originally constructed by the city of Vernon in 2003. And it went commercial close to the beginning of 2006. And currently, it does supply 70% of the city's electric load. So, a little bit about the history. Once we built the power plant and the city operated, the city had its own staff operate the plant through the year 2008. Through the downfall of the financial crisis that did occur in the 2008, the city needed to liquidate some of its assets in order to pay for some bond debt that was coming due. And so they decided to go ahead and sell the Vernon Malberg Generating Station along with transmission assets and some Hoover rights. And that sold in 2008 to Bison LLC. So proceeds from the sale were used to retire some of the debt that the city had and then increase enterprise fund balances and promote industrial development. So, the power purchase toll and agreement with Bison was for 100% of the power through the year 2023 with an option to extend through 2028. So some key things to understand here is that the city did not have an option in 2023 to extend it out the five years. That option was exclusively with Bison. So the city had no say in whether or not they wanted to extend that contract. So that weighed into our our analysis and whether or not we would purchase the plant. Under the PPTA, the Vernon would make the capacity and energy payments and supply all natural gas and water to Malberg Generating Station. So, a little bit about what I'm, when I'm trying to touch on here is that we had very little control, but we did have a, an exclusive agreement to buy all the power of that plant through the year 2028. So, the Malberg purchase, why now? Why was it a good time? So, obviously, the current market conditions were favorable. We had low interest bond rates that we had to take advantage of. And the Bison PPTA contract value was about $325 million. We ended up purchasing the, the plant at $198 million. So, one of the things that we discussed was how would we amortize this out over the, the next couple of years? And again, going back to the extension that, that Bison had in place, we, we basically knew that if we leased this plant for the next seven years from Bison, we would basically lease the plant and then Bison would retain the rights to that plant. So, our contract value, although it was $325 million, we decided to amortize it over the same exact period of seven years so that there was no there was no loss to the utility and it would only present savings. The longer we obviously would amortize it, the more we'd kick that can down the road and we want to be debt free or virtually debt free by the year 2028. So here's the debt that I'm talking about. Through the year 2028, you could see that we have some, some of the 2015 bonds. Those were prepaid gas in 2020. And then we have the newer ones, which was 2021, 2022. So the fiscal debt starts in 2028, the cliff where we drop from having close to $68 million of debt down to less than $10 million. So, when I talk about being virtually debt free, the utility will basically and has been operating around the $70 million fixed debt price for the last 10 years. And we expect that to drop by 2028 and that's when these bonds will be paid off completely. So, why, why purchase it? You know, let's just talk a little bit about the dynamics between the two parties. And, and there's really, there was really three parties involved. There was the, the actual owner operator of the plant and then you have a operator which was basically a subsidiary of Bison LLC and they worked underneath Bison. And then they operated the plant and they worked in conjunction with the city over those years. And then we had to, we went into litigation a couple of years ago to resolve the issues that we had and, and those were resolved in the favor of the city. So, as of right now, we've completed and removed all ties with Bison. So, that, that agreement is terminated and we have brought in the owner operators subsidiary and they went through a background process and they were hired on as city employees. So the city has complete control of the plant. And we'll talk a little bit about more what that control means. So under the PPTA, the city would not have control of the power plant site or the ability to repower the asset after the year 2048. So going back to what I was talking about, if we decided to stay on with the lease, contractually Bison had an agreement in place through the year 2048 with the site. We're not necessarily sure what that meant for the asset, but as far as the, the site was, was concerned for, we would have to abide or work with Bison of any future projects if they wanted to use the site for a repowering process. So that was, that weighed into one of our analysis whether or not we wanted to continue down that road. And then Bison could have used MGS for a different purpose after 2028 and power would have been served elsewhere and it would not, it could have been, it could have called, became a tolling plant. So, we believe it's a sound investment and we continually trying to improve the, the fiscal posture through smart management and timely investments and innovative cost containment measures. The general fund operates on self-sustaining manner which, which focuses on conservative short-term spending, bond-funded infrastructure investments and building financial reserves. So, here's, in recent years, we've taken some action and I go, again, I've gone to the community and I've explained to the community that in order for Vernon to be successful, we needed certain tax measures in order to, to fund certain operations of the city. And when I took over in 2016, it was apparent that the city did not have the general fund revenue in order to sustain its operations. So, I went in front of the business community and I, and I explained to them, look, you need to help us get through this process, but I will look internally and make sure that we cut all costs and we streamline and we create a competitive advantage for our businesses. And again, the word competitive advantage is something that you, you, you need to embrace because that's something that we need to work together because that's our goal here. We're here to provide a service to our business community and to provide a competitive advantage for each business to operate here in Vernon and not only in Vernon, but in, you know, locally in this region, California and, and nationwide and worldwide. So Measure R was put into place, which was approved by the voters for a 5% commercial UUT. And that shifted revenues from the enterprise funds back to the general fund. If you're not sure what an enterprise fund is, basically electricity, water, fiber or gas and general fund is basically monies that are used to provide services, which would be general services for infrastructure roads. It would be for administration. It could be, you know, our financial team and so forth. So two different measures. If, if you look at what funds our police department, it's funded, it's funded by our general fund, not by electric revenues. So then the other measure which, which is, which is the sales tax, which was just passed recently, it, it was adding a transaction tax, tax rate of 0.75%, which projected 7 million in revenue for fiscal year 2021. And that was taking advantage of the delta between what our maximum tax rate could, could handle. So we took in that, that 75 cent increase. We looked internally and we decided that the best move for the city was to provide LA County Fire. In 2020, we, we transitioned out our Vernon fire department and it's estimated that we will save in the next 10 years, close to 75 to 100 million dollars. And if you ask our finance team and you look at what our purse contribution and what that means for future liability for the city, that number is significantly reduced. So, again, the city looked internal and see how it could reduce its operations so that it was not constantly taxing the community. And then finally, the, the acquisition of a power plant, and this is a very conservative number, which is 10 million in contractual savings along with future benefits to the city. And when, when I say the contractual savings for the future are, are looking great, we are taking advantage of that as, as an internal team. And again, to provide the best competitive advantage for our customers, we want to utilize that, that plant so that we're able to bring that competitive advantage for each customer here in Vernon. Right now, if we did nothing and we just ran the plant for the next seven years, the city would save close to $10 million. But there are several different things that the utility is working on at the moment in order to maximize that saving. And we can see something hopefully in the future closer to what we were able to save with LA County Fire and, and really provide, you know, a competitive advantage for our customers. So again, I took over in 2016 as a city, a city administrator. When I took over, our fund balance showed a deficit of our audited financials of negative 10.9 million. And then, you know, our 2022 projected, we're right around $17 million. So you can see that there's been a positive upswing. And again, we are able to pay for services through our general fund balance without relying on electric revenues. And why is that important? Because in the years past, there's been a reliance on the electric utility to subsidize some of those costs in the general fund balance. And again, the general fund is to pay for public service, which would be fire, it would be for, for, for police, it would be for administration and so forth. So these are self-sustaining funds that have the, the revenues in order to, to be self-sustaining, not just now, but into the future. So projecting out to 2026, we're looking at almost adding, you know, $31.7 million of capacity to the general fund. So, you know, we, we, again, we understand that if our customers do not have electricity and if it's not reliable, you lose money and you're not able to get your product out or store your product or produce your product. So, you know, reliability is number one for us and service is also right there at that number one mark. So, operational flexibility and economic benefits, again, we're working hand in hand with the utility to try to increase that flexibility. And then our goal is as a city and as the utility is to have the lowest electric rates in California by 2030. That goal is in our city council chambers. It is basically outlined and it's signed by everybody in the utility back when that goal was committed. And again, that goal goes in line with completing and giving a competitive advantage for our customers. So, reliability, Vernon's load has, has a greater protection and it's heat-related wildfire outages impacting California ISO grid. The city retains resource adequacy and and capability to fulfill capacity requirements beyond the 2028 mark. And now Vernon controls its power plant site and the ability to repower the asset, maximize interconnection. Flexibility, the city may generate power locally when the economic, when it's economical or go to the market when alternative power resources are more affordable. We have control of that now. We're not in a contract where we have to take on the capacity and energy. So if we deem it's, it's appropriate, we may shut down the plant and buy power in the grid or vice versa. We think that we can operate that plant, we'll operate it and not buy power from the grid, but it gives us greater flexibility to integrate renewables and ours, also our power portfolio. So just to summarize again, right now with no, with nothing added and no additional changes to the negotiations with, with our, our contracts or a long-term service agreements or the operational flexibility, you're looking at a savings of, of $10 million. So, how does this benefit a customer? You know, the average customer usage, if you're at 100,000 KWH or all the way up to 300,000, you know, right here that tells you that Vernon TOUG, if you're in that rate category, you're right in the middle and that's where we want you. But again, our goal, and these are only certain utilities that we've done a comparison with. Eventually, our staff will do a comparison with all utilities here in California. And then our goal is to be the lowest of all those California utilities by the year 2030. Here's the average bill of an industrial customer and you can see right now that we're, we're, we're very competitive with Southern California Edison. However, we need a greater delta between us and Edison and also our other utilities. This purchase of the plant will get us there. And then you can see our residential customer base is the lowest right now. It's probably the lowest in California. I don't, I don't think there's another utility in California that offers residential, residential rates at a lower sale, but I'm pretty confident that we're one of the lowest. So, right now, there's no rate impact to our customers by the purchase of this plant. However, we are, you know, we do have seven years that we need to pay for the plant bonds that we took out and then we own the asset outright. So, we're looking at, you know, by the time we do our next rate study, which will be in a couple of years, you know, we're, we're, we're looking at hopefully reducing our rates so that we can hit that 2030 mark. So, it was financed with tax exempt municipal bonds. The term is the same year as the contract with no increased cost. And again, the next cost of service study will likely result in savings. And then it's aligned with the Vernon Public Utilities Plan to be virtually debt-free by the year 2028, which you saw on that slide. So I'll open it up to anybody who has any questions and I'll, I'll be more than happy to try to answer any of your questions that you may have.
Carlos, I don't see any hands raised in Zoom right now. Okay. Have one. Let me go ahead and allow Juan here to speak.
Hello, Carlos.
Juan, go ahead.
Hello. So, so basically what you're doing is trying to save our, the company that, that are in the city of Vernon money in the future.
Correct. Yeah, we're looking at ways that we can save money without taxation of, of our businesses. You got to recognize that the, most cities receive revenue based on residential population. This city does not have that residential population, you know, we're less than 300. So, we just don't receive the same type of tax revenues that other cities get. So we need to look inwards and we also need to look at how we operate in order to save the most money possible to maximize, you know, customer efficiencies.
Yeah, I see you're doing a great job of late, but the next question is how about that 5% increase? Is it ever gonna be waived?
So, so are, are you talking about the, the, the potential rate increases for the next couple of years?
No, the ones that, that were implemented in 2018.
Yes. So again, we need to be able to pay for the bonds and continue to pay for the, either way, we were gonna pay for, for this plant for the next seven years, whether we leased it or we bought it. However, what I'm here to tell you is because we were able to finance it and buy it ourselves, we were able to save a $10 million. And that number is going to significantly drop once you go back to, let me see if I can find it real fast. If you go back to this, this slide. So you see the slide right now? So regardless, we, the utility right now is, is strapped with about $70 million worth of fixed debt. So we need to continue to pay for this up until 2028. And then once that 2028 mark hits, the city, the utility is in position to basically operate and virtually debt-free and it will be able to reduce electric rates for our customers and have the lowest rates in California by the year 2030. So the goal here is that if you see the 2030 mark, you know, the utility will have less than $10 million of, 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 you know, of debt. So you're looking at, you know, a reduction of debt, a significant reduction of debt by the year 2029. Does that make sense?
It does. But still, the question was if like that 5% tax increase that was implemented for electricity and gas, would that eventually be waived? Let's say not this year, but by this year 2028 or is it looking like it's, it's gonna be waived eventually?
Eventually, it won't, it will be after the 2029 mark. We have to get through the next, we have to get through these next couple of years and continue to, to pay off this debt. Once we have our debt paid off, then, then you'll see a rate reduction for our customers. But not in the immediate future. And you will see some sort of, of savings with, you know, the $10 million that we're, we're gonna be saving, that's gonna be baked into how we, how we do rates over the next couple of years. But our next cost of study rate will show a significant reduction, which we anticipate will be in the 2028 mark. And, and the, the sun, are you, are you referring to the sunset of the UUT, the 5%?
Yes.
Yeah, that is going to, we're going, we're going to work with the business community and, and figure out how we can continue to pay that for that UUT because again, that transfers the cost of service from the utility to the general fund. And that's what pays for services. We have to pay for services here in the city, which is fire, police and, and so forth. And that's the way that we generate the revenue in order to pay for those services.
Okay. Well, great job of late with your data you have provided. You guys are doing an exceptional job. I appreciate that. And thank you for answering my question.
You got it.
All right, we have another commenter with Steve. I'll go ahead and allow him to talk. Steve, if you go ahead and state your name and the business you represent.
Yes. My name is Steve Freed. My business is the Vernon Industrial LLC where I warehousing multi-tenant property on Bandini Boulevard. I'm also chairman of the board of the Vernon City of Commerce. I want to commend Carlos and the staff is obviously worked diligently to run the numbers on this, make the determination that the purchase of the power plant is the right thing to do for the city's needs, both for power and economically speaking. You guys are doing a great job and I just wanted to thank you.
Thank you, Steve. I appreciate it.
We do have a comment inside the chat, Carlos, which is from David Cha. He said, will the business rates stay the same in the foreseeable future?
The business rates for electricity, we will see, you know, minimal increases over the next couple of years, followed by reductions past the 2028 mark. But in order to continue to pay for some of the debt that we have on the books, like you see on our slide, we will see slight increases. And again, what the, what we want to do is be transparent. We want to make sure that the business community understands what that, what those increases are gonna be and where their money is going for. And, and, and that way you can plan for it. So I think what we've done in the past is we've done three-year marks where we, we were able to forecast what our debt is going to be for the next three years. And then we go ahead and, and implement that so that businesses can accommodate that in, in years to come. We'll be doing the same thing after this year.
Great. I'll go ahead and go to the next commenter, which is Bob. Bob, I'll go ahead and allow you to speak. If you go ahead and state your name and the business you represent.
Yeah. Hi, thank you. Thank you, Carlos. Bob Davido, the company are Planet Earth. And just a question, in terms of the debt, it looks like it's a balloon payment, not amortizing. Is that correct? Since the balance drops from 70 to 10 million, pretty much all in one year from 2028 to 2029.
Bob, it's actually amortized. So the whole 198 million dollars that we, that we borrowed bond debt on, the last payment will be in 2028. It's not really necessarily a balloon payment, but it's the last year of the amortized value of that contract for the bonds for seven years. So, I mean, obviously, the city could extend that out and refinance that debt over a 30-year period and smooth that, that line item out. But then you're looking at kicking that, that can down the road and you'll have that debt on the books for, for a much longer time. Secondly, we have a really good team here, Bob. You know, we were able to, to keep on Rich Olson and, and, and Matt Richards, we're, who's gonna be looking at how they're going to operate that plant. And they believe that we can continue to operate that plant with minimal capital infrastructure improvements. In other words, we want to make sure that this plant runs through the year 2033, 2034 mark and with minimal capital infrastructure into that plant. So.
Yeah. Much, Carlos. What, what rate was this city able to borrow at?
It was less than, it was less than 2%.
No, that's fantastic. Okay. Well, congrats to you and the team.
Thank you. And Bob, that, that keeps you very, hopefully keeps you competitive here in, in California, especially by the 2028 mark when, you know, hopefully by then we can have the lowest rates in California.
That's what we're looking forward to.
Already, we have our next commenter, which is Marissa. Marissa, I'm gonna go ahead and allow you to talk. If you could, please state your name and the business that you're representing. Marissa, can you hear us? Hello, Marissa. Marissa, I'll go ahead and prompt you to unmute yourself again. Carlos, it looks like Marissa, she says in chat that she's having some trouble with audio and we'll have to differ. And I'm currently seeing no other hands raised in, in Zoom. I'm currently seeing no other hands raised in um in Zoom.
Let me see if I can get Marissa on the phone and then she could talk to the speaker.
Hi there, Carlos.
Hi, I'm not sure how this is gonna work. Let me see if I can.
I'm having a problem with my computer.
Oh, okay. Can everybody hear Marissa?
I can hear her loud and clear.
I think so. So thanks. This is Marissa Ogine with the Vernon Chamber and Bob asked a similar question that I had along with. Just the fact of the city saving ten million dollars and the type, I was curious about the type of capital improvement or or. Uh, you know, that type of maintenance and the cost for that over the next seven to ten years and. Um, I did see that there's no rate increase at the moment, um, but I wanted to know if you had. It sounds like it's a conservative plan to maintain the plant and there won't be any major uh capital improvement. Needs for the power plant over the next ten years.
Yeah, I mean, we're looking at an average of uh. Of capital improvement over the next couple of years, depending on what we find with the units. Um, and the goal here is to keep the units up and running through the twenty three, twenty thirty three, twenty thirty four mark with with the current. Uh, infrastructure that we have right now. And we believe that Siemens has already come in, they've done their inspections. And they believe that they can elongate these assets out. So again, once the asset's paid for in twenty twenty eight, then we can, we can try to prolong that without major. Uh, capital um infrastructure um cost. Um, the goal, obviously, the goal here is to operate the the city's utility. Back like when it was operated in in the nineteen eighties, nineteen nineties um. Uh, and early nineteen nineties where it operated almost at completely debt free. Um, and so so we're able to utilize uh cash reserves in order to. Um, build up our infrastructure and then also build up, you know, whatever infrastructure we need for the future for uh for renewables and so forth. Um, so we're very cognizant of what our our business community needs. And we want to make sure that they maintain that competitive advantage here in Vernon.
That's fantastic. And and just my my final comments to you is that um, we recognize the hard work that you've done to get to this point. You know, in the past ten years, it's been difficult to. Uh, work on this and address and face the structural deficits that um have been hurting the general fund along with the enterprise. And so. Um, my hats, Mike, I just wanted to give you the highest of compliments, Carlos, because you really confronted the structural deficit head on. And um, what you really have achieved is is long term financial sustainability. And or stability for our city and for the businesses. And so we just applaud you for the hard work that has been accomplished. This has been a tremendous. Um, achievement and that's gonna benefit uh everybody along with the residents who um who live in the city and um. You know, there's always been a great incentive to have a business here in Vernon. And we love the priority to for manufacturers to come and live here and reside here and operate a business. And so. We just, we're just excited about this great achievement today and we look forward to uh the next seven years. So thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. And and just so you know, we have. I mean, we just have a phenomenal, phenomenal team here at Vernon right now and um, you know, our department heads. Um, our staff, they understand where we're trying to drive this and it's backed by a city council that supports. What we want to do. So I gotta give kudos to everybody because without them, we know we wouldn't be where we are right now and. For them and for everybody to understand the vision in the future, um, is it's so important. So I can't take all the credit, but I I want to give credit to, you know, the phenomenal department heads that we have here at the city. Uh, it's just. It's just a pleasure to work with and true professionals.
Thank you.
Okay.
So we have another commenter, Juliet. I'll go ahead and have her allow to talk. Juliet, if you can go ahead and state your name and the business you represent.
Yes, um, Juliet Goff, can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Excellent.
Yes.
Cal Plastics, um, also a board member for the Vernon Chamber of Commerce and. Um, I, all I wanted to say was um, how amazing this is. I'm just in awe looking at these numbers and reflecting on how. Far we've come and to you, Carlos and your team, even though there's not a lot of people. Out loud right now applauding, please know that we are all applauding you right now because this is absolutely. Amazing and um, I I don't think, I don't think any, I I don't know that there'll be any other city that could have. Accomplished what. We've accomplished after going through what we've gone through in addition to doing what we're doing right now in given how tremendously difficult. It is to to operate a business anywhere in California. So I just want to say thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Juliet. And again, we have great, once you go around and you drive around the city, you see what great people we have here, what great companies we have here. People fall in love with the city and they and they truly understand it. And again, understand, our goal here is to provide a service to our business community. We're here to serve you. We're not here to to stuff the general fund with as much money as we can and. The electric utility with as much money as we can. Look, we we understand that keeping businesses competitive is our number one priority. Without that, we don't, we don't survive as a city. So we understand our mission and we're always striving for that. Is that it, Matt?
Um, that's it. We don't, I don't see any more hands raised in Zoom, so.
All right. Well, again, thank you, everybody for joining us today. Um, if you want to talk about this or if you want to come see the plant. Uh, you want to come get a tour of it, reach out to my office. Uh, we'll get you, we'll get you in there to take a look at it, see the operation. Uh, we'll show you, we'll take the time and show you, you know, where your tax dollars are going and and how it's being spent. So by all means, if you want to have, uh, if you want to see inside knowledge of that plant, reach out to my office, we'll we'll get you out there and you can take a look at it. Thank you for taking the time today. It 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 really reinforces what I what I know that our businesses truly care and um. And again, thank you to all and and my staff has done a a phenomenal job and. I'll take off. Um, we'll we'll go ahead and close the meeting on that note. Thank you.